Before we do the minutes, just for the sake of those in the audience that have an agenda and for the council's benefit, the resolution number 11 has a typographical error in it, which will be corrected, but just for the note, it's not 501 here on Avenue, it is 301 here on Avenue. And then, I guess I didn't really officially call the meeting to order, Monday, July the 11th, and would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Amos.
President.
Councilmember Archibald.
Here.
Councilmember Ashford.
Present.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Lewandowski.
Here.
Councilmember Ruiz.
Here.
Mayor Rep.
Here. You have the minutes from the regular meeting of June the 27th. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Ashford. Is there a second? Support Mayor Paul Tim Archibald. Is there any additions, deletions? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes will stand as submitted. We have one presentation, if the clerk would please read that.
Kirk Weston, Managing Director of the City County Road Commission, will give a presentation on their county transportation millage renewal proposal.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank the board and the mayor for allowing me to speak tonight on a very important topic. And with me tonight, I have Ken Forstner, one of our three road commissioners as well. What we're looking for is a renewal of a millage that we've had in place now for four or five years. It is a quarter mill, and it is used for transportation needs. The city in Port Huron also participates in that millage and receives money from that millage, about $137,000 a year in funds. What we use the funding for is road projects and to match federal aid that comes available to us in two different forms, one for bridges, two for road construction projects on federally aid eligible roads. We have 228 bridges in the county, so it's very important to us. As you know, with your draw bridges, the expense of maintaining those and repairing and so on, how that can be a burden. How that bridge money comes to us is 95% federal aid, 5% road commission funds, which we use these millage dollars to match. It's a matching program. Federal aid, road projects, same way, but it's an 80/20 split. So we've been able to use those road monies, or dollars, in a number of different projects throughout the county. And the numbers that show here, with the millage and what the road commission put forward on our roads and our system, was about $7.5 million worth of funding. We received over $47 million in return in federal aid. So it is a great program. In fact, our return on investment is about $5.32 for every dollar we put into it. This gives you an idea of the funds that, how they're distributed. Some years are higher than others, been on what's available, and there are years that cities participate in this, and they're entitled to some of that money as well. The money they receive is based on their taxable value within their city or their village. The quarter mill will generate about $1.4 million in total. About $350,000 goes to cities and villages. Again, the city receives about $137,000 out of that. It's a four-year mill, '16 through 2019. The money that we don't use for federal aid is freed up to do other projects on our local system, and we share that with our townships. The quarter mill, what's it mean to the resident of Port Huron or Sinclair County? It is a quarter mill, so if I own a home of $100,000, SEV value of $50,000, the taxable value, it's about $12.50 a year. So for $12.50 a year, it's a great investment, great return on your investment that way, and that's, we've been able to do a lot of good with that. The funds are used throughout the county. This is just a map, kind of shows some projects over the last few years. And when we look at this, we look at our system as a whole, and what that means, how does it affect the city of Port Huron? How does it affect Marine City, Marysville, and so on? So we work closely with them to see how that works, and we do that through the SCOTTS Committee, through our Transportation Improvement Plan, which is a three-to-five-year plan. So you'll receive funds in the near future for roads such as River Road, 13th Street, and McMorn, I believe. So you have some projects coming up. In the past, you've used this for such projects as Sanborn, or a portion of these funds. I know you put some of your water dollars in there and so forth, so... But that kind of concludes my presentation for tonight, and I didn't know if you had any questions on that.
Does anyone in council have any questions? I guess not, but thank you for presenting tonight.
Thank you very much.
We'll move on. Now is the opportunity under public comment for anyone to come to the podium and address the council. If you wish to do so, please give your name, and you have four minutes.
First off, I want to thank Lewandowski. I went back and reviewed all the minutes, and I watched all the videos from all the meetings, and you were the only one that had any concern at all at the end of the meetings, what's going on with this maple? What's going on with this maple? Well, I met with Todd Shody, and I met with Dave Heinz a month ago after I was here. They showed up at the lot. I showed him exactly where the hole is, right dead smack in the middle of the lot, and they recommended I get an attorney and go after the guy that pulled the permit. They said that there is no code for what this gentleman did to this land. But I went down to the clerk's office, and I found this code here, and I'm just going to read you a couple paragraphs, and then I'm pretty much done. It says, "General supplemental regulations for excavating, removal, and filling of land." It said, "The use of land for excavation, removal, filling, or depositing of any type of earth, material, topsoil, gravel, rock, rubbish, or any other waste, byproducts, is not permitted in any zoning district except under a certain special certificate." The only exclusion on this is this section does not apply to normal removal for a basement or any kind of footings around. And as I said back in February, this house was on timbers, and it was on cinder blocks, and it was on a crawl space. According to this, I did contact a couple attorneys. According to them, they told me what to do, and the problem I'm having is, both attorneys gave me a free 15-minute consultation visit without having to cost me nothing, and they said that there's not really nothing they can do if, according to the city, the guy that pulled the permit, Doug Jawors, didn't do nothing wrong. They said, "If the city had fined him, then I can go after him for damages." So I pulled the copy of that permit, and the permit, it's a basic permit that says, "Complete the following: complete demo, clear the lot, and cap the sewer line." That's it. It didn't say nothing about digging. And the other question I had was, I went up to the city inspections this morning, and I asked them for a copy of the final, when John Schmidt was supposed to have come out and actually physically viewed the cutting of the sewer line and capping of the sewer line. And according to the paperwork that John turned in, he said that it was scheduled for April 14, 2015, and it was approved April 14, 2015. And I find that hard to believe, because I sat there and witnessed it on March 18, after I left the city building. I sat right there and watched that company come back, dig up six feet, cut the pipe, cap it, and left, and that's when I was already here. So the city is, I'm stuck with this land, $6,000. I can't sell it without disclosing it, so I went to the county, and the county said, "All you can do is on the deed, don't pay the taxes, don't do nothing. Two years from now, it'll go into tax fault, and I'm just going to have to donate the land back to the county and let the county handle it from there." Because I've tried, and Alan Lewowski, I mean, I've seen, he kept, "Hey, what's going on? What's going on with maple? What's going on with maple?" And he showed more interest than anybody did on this lot. And I live right across the street, and I'm looking at this lot. Now, I bought the lot, I know you're watching the minutes, but I bought the lot to do something with it, and when I tried to do something with it, you got an email back in January, and that canceled me. It cost me a lot of money. So my four minutes is almost up.
Yeah, it is.
But I'm just saying that there is an ordinance for burying garbage 20 feet deep and ruining a lot, even though they say there's not. And there's definitely some typo errors on the dates, because I don't jive, I was right there.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I would ask if Mr. Freed would please look into that and...
I've been asking for a year and a half, and I've been here since February 8.
Forward, so I would like to have that looked into. Thank you.
I got my number.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Is this four minutes a person or four minutes the whole thing?
It's four minutes a person.
But we won't take that long, and thank you for having us tonight. My name's Katie Stiver. I live at 2908 Forest, next to Palmer Park. There's a few things I'd like to address tonight, and first of all, I thank you for improving our parks and recreation for the residents of the city. However, we do have an issue with the basketball court that was placed in Palmer Park, which is directly next to our home. There's a huge amount of noise generated from that basketball court. At times, there's 10 to 20 people on that court. We hear the basketballs bouncing, slamming of the backboards, cursing. This is placed within an area of playscape, so you would think there'd be young kids in that area, but at the same time, you have adults that are half-dressed, swearing, and playing basketball. It's a very inappropriate spot for that basketball court. It's very unpleasant to listen to, day after day, Friday nights when we get out of work all through the weekend. I think there could have been some research and thought behind where that was placed. I think there were some grant monies used for that, so changing it might be hard, it might be difficult. However, we are asking that something be done in the very near future. There's been safety issues. You know, we call the police. It's not on the top of the list, and I can understand why, I guess, for the police to come out every time. It's 9:30, 10:30 at night, and there's still people playing, or we hear the noise and commotion, but it is a great concern to us. I have several neighbors here with us tonight, and we just want to address a few things. I have some photos and articles that were placed in the Port Huron Times Herald that I wanted to hand out, that you guys could share. Is that okay if I bring that up?
Just give them to House Member Harris at the end, he can pass them back.
Okay. And again, you know, we have a great team. Nancy in the rec department has her communication with us attached to this, so we appreciate that, but we're asking that something more be done. The evidence that was put up, it does nothing for the noise, we can still see it, it's right, I mean, it's within 100 feet of our house, of our lot, so... We were not given notice, we were given no mailing on the change, and, you know, we want some attention. This is my husband, Charlie, and he may have something else to say.
No, it's everything she said. It's a very, you know, we enjoy kids playing, parents coming down with their kids, we enjoy that a lot. It's when the older adults take over the court, kids and parents leave, because you can't be there at the same time. The amount of cuss words and the trash talk that the men do, it's incredible. And like she said, it goes on all day, on some days. And I can't say it's every day, but on some days, it's all day long, and it goes from 5:30 a.m. until 10:30 at night. We've seen it, and we've witnessed it. It's incredible.
I don't think anybody would want to sit and listen to basketballs that, day in and day out.
Thank you for listening to us.
You have a couple neighbors that also have...
Good evening. My name is Sally Steinborn. I live one house north of Charlie and Katie, and I have some pictures that I've written on here, some issues that we have that officials may see. The better window is right above where the court, the noise is coming in, and so I'm awakened at 5:30 in the morning with someone starting, and last night, at 10:30 at night, there were kids out on the court. And so it is, it's not an everyday occurrence, but I would say four out of seven days a week, there's an issue. We all live in a community in one way or another, and we all have an opportunity to make things better. I grew up in Port Huron, and I consider this my city. My family has been here since the 1890s. We own two businesses in the city of Port Huron. I have three brothers, two sisters, that all pay taxes, and a 91-year-old mother that pays taxes. I personally own an array of properties throughout Port Huron, so I pay an enormous amount of taxes, and I'm very frustrated that my city is allowing that this nuisance continues and the law-breaking to continue in my city. We have the right to live in peace, and our neighborhood has not been peaceful since June of 2015. The noise, the profanity, and constant banging has become intolerable. The contacts we made about this last summer and the changes the city made, thank you, but it's not enough. The court was placed too close to the residence and far too far away from the city to be any self-monitoring. It's way up there, you'll see in some of the pictures, that the kids can come and go as they please, do what they want, and nobody's there. If I call the Palmer Park, they're right out like this, but they leave at 7, 8 o'clock at night, and it's light until 10. There's a sign that says the park's to close, not open until 8:00 in the morning, and it's to close by 9:00 at night. I go to bed early. I get up very early, and it wakes me more often than I can tell you. It's not the right way, it's not fair to me as a taxpayer to have to deal with this. The simple solution for us, that we've discussed with some of the officials, is to repurpose the court. There's tons of things that we could do. If the city deems that it's mandatory to have a basketball court in Palmer Park, then they could put it right at the south of the building where it could be monitored. There's streets that would be there, and there's hills. It's seven acres of park, and it was placed 50 yards from the residence. And some of that, I think that might be a little stretch. I think as far as the windows go, it might be even closer than that. And growing up in Port Huron as a teenager, and I'm a little old, the city closed down the basketball court at Lakeside Park due to the nuisance and complaints by the neighbors. The past practice, by opinion, has been established. I hope that you see the need to close this court as well for our benefit. The city management did the right thing back then, and I'm hoping you will do it again. It's very easy for us to get caught up in our personal lives and forget that we have obligations to be responsible members of our community. I hope you consider that, and instead, consider that instead of putting others in their place, you put yourself in ours. If you were out there, some of you ride your bike by, you're not there 24/7. I do have a recording with the swearing from yesterday morning, and this was just, I happened to be there, I can play it, but if you get the gist, I won't take up your time with that. It's a 60-second.
We only have about 15 seconds left, so...
Okay, so doing the right thing's easy, but knowing what to do is the difficult part, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Frances Gardner. I live at 2904 Grashad Avenue, which is right adjacent to Palmer Park. And first of all, I want to thank the mayor and Nancy for all their assistance since last year. I'm a little nervous, so I'm just going to read what I wrote, okay? "As Mr. Freed pointed out to one of my neighbors last year, it was our choice to purchase our home and move in next to Palmer Park. But 39 years ago, when we moved in there, wasn't a basketball court. We had slides, swings, and merry-go-round, and no problems. Sometimes afterwards, a court was, one hoop was constructed, and still we had no problems. But since last summer, since the existing court was transformed to a full court with two hoops, we've been under attack by people playing ball, using foul language, displaying rude behavior, and drinking alcohol, which I believe are all against the city ordinances. As far as I'm aware of, there wasn't an impact study made on the effects on the neighborhood before this project was started. The court is less than 50 yards from our bedroom windows. We are awakened at 5:30 in the morning by bouncing balls, and they play as late as 1:00 a.m., waking us up then. Last year, we were told to call the police if we had a problem in the park. I did that until the dispatcher told me not to call again, that the police had more important things to handle. It's not only the neighbors being affected by this. Two women were called in to talk back this year, expressing how they brought their small children to the park to play and had to leave because of the men swearing. The city installed signs stating park rules and times, which are being ignored, so there's no solution there. The city had DTE put a guard on the streetlight at the end of 4th Street, so there wasn't sufficient light to play. DTE removed that two weeks ago after replacing the light bulb, so still no solution. City installed a fence at the end of 4th Street that doesn't eliminate the noise, still no solution. The city workers have a full-time job trying to pull away the balls that are supplied by the city and pick up all the trash strewn all over. I can't understand why it's acceptable to the city officials that we, the citizens, have to be harassed and chased home by bullies playing basketball at all hours of the day and night. We are asking for, what we are asking for is to have the court removed or placed somewhere else in the park, probably by the park building. Thank you."
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Amanda Downs. I'm at 2924 Forest. We're about five houses from the park. On our street, our little, small part of Forest, we're one of the few houses that have kids. We have a six, seven, and 11-year-old, and we no longer go to the park because of the issues. If it's during the day, our kids have to listen to people fighting, swearing, being really aggressive on the basketball courts, and the court's pretty close to all of the other play structures, so there's no way to not hear it or to get past it or move away from it. Our 11-year-old, who was in, well, going in sixth grade, she would go to the park with her friends. She no longer can, because about two months ago, boys that were not allowed in the park grabbed my son by his shirt and chased him off. Things like that happen all the time, every time we're at the park, so we can't even utilize it, even though we've been in the house a long.
Six years.
So it's now not an option after a year. We can't even take our kids there.
And I believe as the first couple minutes, we hate to complain when you guys are improving things in the city. I mean, at first, when we saw it happening, we thought it'd be a great thing, it'd be excellent for the kids. However, unfortunately, most of the time, there isn't kids utilizing it. It is more or less grown men who push the kids out, bully the kids. There was one time, I was actually down there with all three of our young children, and they're literally smoking marijuana openly, like it was okay and not a big deal. And I mean, I, we are no, we're 20 feet away at a jungle gym with our children. You know, we don't have any recommendations as what need to be done, and we hate to even complain when you guys are trying to improve things. That is excellent, but at this point, we don't even feel comfortable taking our children there. They can't go there on their own. I mean, our 11-year-old used to be able to supervise the two younger ones down there. That can't happen. She went down with just the kids one time, and the comments and inappropriate statements that were said to her in the presence of our children while trying to just walk past the court, you know, for them to play on the jungle gym and the slides and that, was so bad that she won't even go down there with the kids now.
And we have called the police also, but again, they have better things to do, and they're not directly injuring us, so no one's going to come right away. We just can't utilize a park that we thought we could when we moved there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to tell you what happened last Fri-, or Friday the 8th. It was around 11:30 in the morning, and I was headed towards Pine Grove on Sanborn. I pulled up, and all of a sudden, bam, there was an accident, and there was a car coming at me, and it stopped just a couple of feet from me, and the woman was hysterical, she was screaming. She yelled at me to call 911, and she was concerned about her small child. I, myself and another person went over there and attended the child. The mother, I tried to open her door, her door was jammed, her door would not open. The fire department is right there on the corner. I proceeded to go to the fire department. I knocked on every door and every window, there was not a person there. There were other people attending the other car, and within minutes, the Fort Grashad Fire Department was there, and several police cars. After I left, and there was like fluid coming from the car, the young woman was saying that her leg hurt her bad, and that's where it was crashed, and I had no idea if her leg was bleeding, if it was broke, but she was so concerned about her child. So after EMS, and everybody came, and there was help for them, I left, and it really bugged me. It really bugged me that there was nobody in that fire department. So I went to Fort Grashad Fire Department, and I asked them, and they said, "They were called." And I said, "Well, how come nobody was at the fire department?" "Well, they really didn't know." So I said, "Okay, maybe the Times Herald knows what's going on." Well, the Times Herald really didn't care. They said, "Maybe you should call the police department." "Okay, I'll call the police department." So I called the fire, or the police chief, which I got a clerk, and I told her my situation, and she said, "Well, maybe you should call the fire department." "Okay." But she was able to tell me when you had your meeting. That was all I could get from that person. So I called the fire department, whoever was in charge that day. And he said, "Well, we had cutbacks, that we closed different departments or different centers periodically or whatever." And I said, "You know, this really bugs me. There was no, those lights were out, those traffic lights were out. That accident should not have happened. Two cars, I could have been the third one, it should never have happened. Why wasn't somebody there to direct that traffic? We've got people from out of town, we've got young drivers, we've got old drivers, we've got thousands of cars on Pine Grove every day, every hour, I would assume. People from Canada, wherever." So my thing is, there was nobody to direct that traffic, and I, you know, I'm really bugged about it. DTE should have done something about that light, there should have been somebody, something there to, how can I say, to have some emergency power of some kind. I don't know if it should have been the state police, the city, the police, the sheriff, the county, whoever. There should have been somebody there to direct that traffic. Those lights should not have been out. Evidently, they were out from early in the morning until 11:30. When I was there...
Four minutes are up, but we will certainly have the...
The kicker is, I went down Erie Street, and DTE was changing light bulbs.
What date did you say that was?
That's Friday.
That's Friday?
Yep.
Chief Reeves, I think, has a comment to make on that, if you could please. Thank you.
Council, mayor, city manager, as you, many of you may remember, we had a northern power failure that affected Fort Grashad, Port Huron, numerous residents, businesses. We simply do not have enough police officers working at one time to direct traffic at as many traffic signals we have, and we'd have nobody else to answer the calls. There's never has been, nor there will there be, any cutbacks. There was no cutbacks. I don't know who said that, but that's absolutely false. The fire rigs were out on runs. There were lines downs, there was other issues that they were pertaining to. I worked Friday, I was there, my home was without power, I live in that area. When there's no power to a traffic light, under Michigan law, you're supposed to treat that as a four-way stop. A lot of people don't, unfortunately, but that's the law, so you're supposed to come to complete stop and then give right away to traffic where appropriate. So at that point, we don't have the bodies to man every thing. DTE had been called approximately at 1:00 in the morning, they had numerous... prob where somebody could be electrocuted, and then they work down that list. When they can't get to enough of them, they do call in outside contractors. I did see outside contractors working in the city, trying to restore power. But, that is the truth, there is, there was no cutbacks in the fire department, all the fire rigs were busy, it was an extremely busy day. If I recall correctly, that may have been the day we had a fire done paper, we also had a jet ski accident in the Black River, we had numerous different things going on all at once.
Just, she did mention about Fort Grashit Fire Department, that's because they backed us up?
We called Fort Grashit to assist us in the north end, we called Porter Township, it was on the west end, we called Marysville if they're available too. So, we called, somebody else was available, because all three of our stations were tied up.
Mayor Rep.
Yes.
And I too liked, I think all four, all four lights was out. I lived there, and I witnessed the aftermath, and I felt like getting out directing traffic myself. But, it was, it was, Sandborne was out, Holling was out, the other one was out, you know, I'm thinking, Jesus, yeah. So, I was affected by that also.
And we simply do not have enough generators to hook up to every light to run it.
Madam Mayor, if I will add, the streetlights being changed out are not, they're contractors that work for DTE, they're not actually DTE crews, they're subcontractors, who all they have in their trucks are the new light heads and the lights, and so they wouldn't have the equipment to repair downlines, and those subcontractors.
Thank you. Thank you for making that clear. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council this evening? Seeing no one, I was-
Mayor, before you close the public hearing, may I say something?
Yeah.
Okay. I would just like to, you know, I was certainly touched by the neighborhood, it was the first time I ever heard of anything that was going on up there in regards to the disturbance about the basketball court. But, they did make, make a statement about they hate to complain. You know, you have every right to complain and keep complaining, if something isn't right, no matter what we're doing, you know, we're not perfect, but we need to hear from you. And I just commend you all for coming forward and letting us know that. And hopefully, we could, you know, come to some kind of solution. And I was gonna ask, I said, "What kind of solution do they have?", but the young lady did offer a solution, so you can complain, but yet you had something that we could, you know, consider, you know, going forward. So, I'd just like to thank you and encourage you to keep coming forward, you know, whatever issues, if you've got some issues out there, this is your city, and we represent you, and you just need to stand up. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I was going to close the public comment and then make a comment, but-
Yeah, okay, no, I didn't, I just, no, I wasn't-
So, I will close the public comment, but then I was going to make a comment relative to that, but go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just, real quickly, we've been following the park issue for now more than a year. We haven't just let it fester, we've taken some actions, we've installed a fence between Palmer Park and Forest, we've extended that fence, we planted some evergreen trees. I didn't realize, they, I just now realized they changed out that streetlight for LED, so that would have been the reason why the shield came down. I guess we didn't realize, I don't think anyone realized that shield was down. We put a shield up to prevent light shining on the court at night, so if it was too late to be playing, they physically couldn't see the hoop to play, so we thought that would cut down on it. I live around there, I'm there in that park every single day, there are large, large crowds there, and there's a lot of older people there. It's a, it's a tough situation. The basketball court's nothing new, we expanded it, which is new, we put double courts in from the one hoop. We've taken a lot of action to try to address the issue, but it comes to a point where we have to decide, you know, is the basketball stay, or is the basketball court to go? Because we're, we're running out of things we can do. We've done fencing, we did evergreen trees, we shielded the light, we've put park staff out there during the days, sometime last year, I think, last week for, last year, for three or four weeks, we had park staff just kind of monitor it. We've installed signage, and so we're, I mean, I don't, I think we've just kind of done nothing with your complaints, we've tried to make measured responses throughout the entire year, but it is getting to that point where we're running out of things to do.
Thank you. I was just going to say, at the end of that, that I've been involved with Sally Steinborn anyways, as one of the neighbors, and also Francis Gardner, and we've been trying to make the changes that, in fact, Mr. Freed said. But, obviously, I think more discussion's going to have to be held on that, so I would encourage you to get with park staff and, and chief, as far as the complaints that were brought forward, and see what we can, where we need to go.
Absolutely.
We'll move on now to the consent agenda, is there a motion?
So moved.
That would be Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, I think it was seconded by Councilmember Caitlin Stott. Take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Items on the consent agenda, approving the vacation of the street right-of-way on Fort Street between Glenwood and Beers without reservation of a public utility easement, approve the decertification of Fort Street between Glenwood Avenue and Beers Street in accordance with Act 51 of 1951, approve the 2016 request for local millage distribution from the St. Clair County Parks and Rec Commission, certify the delegates to serve at the 2016 Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan Annual Meeting in accordance with the Michigan Employees Retirement Act of 1984 as amended, approve the scheduling of a public hearing for August the 8th to hear comments on the CAPR program for 2015, confirm and approve single-lot special assessments for the cost of sidewalk replacement in the right-of-way, confirm and approve single-lot special assessments for fines, assessments under cost of removing blight, blighting factors, and/or causes of blight, as well as the abatement of nuisances. That brings us to, from the City Manager, item one.
Mayor, Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Just a, just a point of notation here, can we, as we do these, can we, on the agenda, can we take three and four together, and also seven and eight?
On the resolutions?
On the resolutions?
Yeah, I was going, yeah, at that time, or the other part, but yes, I don't have a problem, we'll bring it up at that time. In fact, it's more than seven or eight, there's several that have to do with the bridges, so there's three of them, seven, eight, and nine, yeah. Okay, we'll go back to, from the City Manager, number one.
Accepting the bid from Blue Water Chrysler in the amount of $56,150 for two 2016 Dodge vehicles for use by the police department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second? Support. Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item two.
Accepting the bid from Moran Chevrolet in the amount of $28,144.15 for a 2016 Chevrolet eight-passenger van for use by the Parks and Forestry Department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Madam Mayor, if I can just, real quickly, add, on both the Chevrolet purchase and the Blue Water Chrysler purchase, they beat the MyDeal bid, our local dealerships came in lower than state bid, and so we appreciate our two dealerships being so aggressive with their bids to keep that business local.
That is nice. There's no discussion, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item three, please.
Accepting the bid from Bell Equipment in the amount of $14,960 for two-month rental of a street sweeper for the Public Works Division.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Go ahead. Councilmember Lewandowski.
Let me ask him a question?
Sure.
Yes, sir. Do we already have the street sweeper in, being used right now?
We have a street sweeper that we are currently renting, we want to continue the rental for that for another two months, it exceeds our purchase authority, and that's what we're coming to the council.
So, if we don't accept this tonight, then it had to go back?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald?
My question is, what does it cost to replace a sweep, sweep, street sweeper, or to buy our own, as opposed to the continual renting?
Well, we intend to bring a purchase of a street sweeper in the next thirty to sixty days. We're currently in the process of procuring bids for the purchase of a street sweeper. We have it in the budget for approximately $180,000.
Is there other questions from council, discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
What are we gonna do with the three that are not in operation right now, the three street sweepers?
I'm sorry, say again.
What are we gonna do with the three street sweepers that are in operation right now?
Well, currently, we have two street sweepers. The first one is an Elgin, which is a, the, well, the picture up here, the Elgin Crosswind is a Whirlwind, is a regenerative air sweeper, it has over 4,000 hours on it, it's a 2005 vehicle, and it was purchased for $141,000 back in 2005. And it was out of service, we need 125 days per year of service for these vehicles to keep up with our requirements, both for MDOT, to do the sweeping of the main trunk lines, and to do their NPTs, or NPDES permit requirements for street sweeping. This vehicle was available for forty-four days out of 125 in 2015, and so far, it's been available twenty-five days out of sixty-four for this year. The other vehicle that we have is the 1999 Johnston, which we bought in 99 for $80,000. It has over 6,000 hours on it, it's a mechanical sweeper. In 2015, we had fifty-nine days out of 125 possible days, and this year, we've had it for thirteen days out of sixty-four days, and we are currently not able to bring it back into service, because it is, the body and the ductwork has rusted to the point, I call it pigpen. It, you ever see it on the road, that's exactly what it looks like everywhere it goes. The, the view from the operator's window is that.
Water not working on it?
Excuse me?
Is the water not working on it?
That is correct. It also has too many holes in the vents, we've tried to patch it, to weld it, we've cannibalized parts from the other old bodies that we've got, it cannot be fixed. We've, we've gone to two service companies, Bell Equipment and Sweeper Part Sales, looking for parts to repair and refurbish this, and we cannot get the parts that we need, and they've both told us that it is not worth the investment, because it's so old, it's approaching eighteen years old, and the normal life of these is ten to fifteen. So, we are looking to replace one of these sweepers, because the Johnston, as soon as we get a new sweeper, we're gonna essentially scrap it.
The other two that are not working that are out in the field, we intend to scrap those in the purchase of a new one?
They, they've, they've been scrapped years ago, they're nothing but spare parts, and we've cannibalized just the way everything we can off them already.
Okay. Well, that's gonna be my question, because you should have a backup in case one's down, so we don't have to rent you, if you take one of the older ones, and, but if you don't have enough parts, you don't have enough parts.
I just have to ask, is this the one that we didn't approve the purchase of before?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's it. Excuse me, Mayor Rep, yeah, that's what we were talking about, we-
Oh, yeah, I thought that, it sounded familiar, that's why I wondered.
We didn't, yeah, you were before's before.
Well, it sounds like it's become crucial, so.
Yes, ma'am, I could continue, but I'll just leave it.
Yeah, no problem. No, no, I just wanted to make sure, because I was just vaguely remembering that, so.
Oh, I guess one question, if we ordered one, how long would it take to get here?
Thirty to sixty days.
And you're in the process of getting bids right now, is that correct?
We intend to bring it back, possibly in the August council meeting.
August meeting, correct. That'd probably be a good thing.
Madam Mayor, one of the issues we've had as well is, because we haven't been able to strip our sweets, or, sorry, sweep our streets in a capacity, we have been using our VAC trucks to clean out catch basins, to somehow clean out curb and gutters, which is putting an enormous strain on our VAC trucks, which were never really designed for that type of use. And so, I do get phone calls, probably on a weekly basis, people calling about their streets needing to be swept, so it is, it is an issue that people are calling in about now.
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem Archibald.
If it's going to be August before we have the quotes back to us, and it's thirty, sixty days to get a replacement in, this two-month lease is gonna run out before you have a replacement.
We intend to have the replacement in by the August council meeting, and hopefully, we can bring it, once we have one that we can bid on and purchase, it'll be available at that time. I'm talking about the time it takes for us to procure it from a start, which is where we are now.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, one last thing, I've instructed the DPW staff that when they procure this, to not only solicit new VAC trucks, but we would be, they'd let the vendors know that we would be very interested in a slightly-used VAC truck. That market sometimes drives up, but once in a while, you get lucky, and there's one sitting on a lot someplace, so we're not just looking at used one, our new ones, if we can get ourselves on a good used one, we're very interested in that as well, and we're looking at that with the vendors.
Money, are you looking to buy a new mechanical one, or a new vacuum?
We're not gonna look for a regenerative air machine at all, we're looking for mechanical only.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. We'll move on to resolutions, number one, please.
Authorizing nineteen payments.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there any discussion questions?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris.
I wonder if we could have the engineer explain to us on item number nineteen, the change order for $34,000?
Commission, Councilman Harris, the change order for number nineteen is for $34,000, which is being used for the final change. They found a number of problems when we went in to repair and refurbish the primary clarifiers, and there were some electrical issues, they needed to buy equipment that was not originally planned, and the balance, we had some things that were better, some things were not good, but essentially, it was unforeseen structural parts that were required, and required stabilization. We added SCADA equipment, so that this could be monitored by our computer system, that was not part of the original bid, but that actually was for a credit, because we reduced the number of equipment that we were adding, that we didn't, finally, we didn't need. So, essentially, with the additional electrical control upgrades that we required, and unforeseen structural parts, the total came to $34,000 additional.
So, who possibly made the error that they underestimated by, by so much?
Well, unfortunately-
Was this, was this one of our hired engineers, or?
Well, this was not so much an error, as you don't know the condition of the equipment until you turn it off, drain it, and take it apart. And this equipment had been running, essentially, for years, and we, for the first time, are going to refurbish the primary clarifiers, and some things, we had to, you know, make an estimate on, and we found out that the condition was worse than we had thought it was. Especially with, going into the electrical panels, some of the, the bus bars, it turned out, were just barely making proper contact, they had to be replaced.
Last question, how did we deserve the $12,000 discount?
Well, we found a way to make the SCADA system work without adding a new set of modules, so that, that saved us some money.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Number two.
Resolution in support of the St. Clair County Drug Task Force Millage.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, supported by Councilmember Ashford. Is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Thank you. There's no other questions, we will take the vote.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Number two.
Resolution in support of the Saint Clair County Drug Task Force Millage.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, supported by Councilmember Ashford. Is there any discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. As was suggested, renaming two park areas, three and four. If no one has had any objections, we can take them together. Is there any objections? We'll take them together.
Three and four. Renaming the Nineteenth and Division Tot Lot to Audrey E. Pack Park, naming the fenced-in playground area within Lincoln Park to be James C. Atchison Playground in Lincoln Park.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Ashford.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I was kinda gratified to see that the park... I was back in the day, knew that Councilmember, former past Councilmember Audrey Pack did a lot of work to get that Tot Park there, so I could really connect with that one. And also, on the James C. Atchison, I can connect with him throughout the city of Port Huron, and I just... I know that the city manager is telling me he has a personal thing where he used to play there, but as a city council, and I'm just thinking, the way the resolution reads, this small little park that we wanna do in the name of, you know, the city of Port Huron, I know we can do better than this. I know he has, you know, buildings named after him and everything, but this little piece of park, you know, I don't know... I guess more thought should've went in it from ours instead of on a more personal approach. I know, you know, that you probably talked to a lot of people saying that, you know, he used to play there, so he's there, you know, but sometimes, we don't need to be as personal as just trying to do the right things for everybody, you know, in representation of what we do. So, I hope sometimes in the future that we look at this again. I mean, you could still, you know, we can vote here tonight to the little playground area. We can call it the James C. Atchison, but I just think, to me, it's... You know, it doesn't fit the impact. You know, this man is caring. He could put his money anywhere, but he put it in Port Huron, south end, north end, downtown, you know? It just means a lot, and I just think that this... We could've went the distance on this and dug a little bit deeper and been more meaningful about it, and you probably were. I mean, to be personal, maybe that's what you were talking about, but I don't know. It's just like a hidden nugget, you know, there, you know, and like you have to do, go back around and do it a second time to make something right, you know? It's like a convenience or opportunity. So, when you do things by design, it's a little bit more... It's a little bit more special, and I think James C. Atchison is a very special man. You know, he's just tops, you know, and what he... He doesn't want anything back. He never has. He just wanna give back to the city. And so, you know, it's nothing wrong that you're doing this, but I just think sometimes the hearts of people, you wanna do the best you can do, and I don't know if that's the best I can do, sitting here saying that, you know, 'cause he played at the park, we wanna name it James C. Atchison's Park. So, I... You know, so I will vote yes, you know, because I think, you know... I would just vote yes, but I just hope in the future that we could... One council will find themselves to put on... Put something, maybe it's a street, maybe it's something else, but it certainly could outdistance this right here, what we're doing.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Ruiz?
May I see her point, but I don't think we're going to be done giving back to Mr. Atchison, but it kinda mirrors his unassuming personality. I mean, he's never, ever sought the spotlight.
Right.
And I think if they see a connection there, I think he's gonna be as pleased as anyone that that's there. And again, I doubt we're done. The councils will be done acknowledging all the things he's done.
Okay.
But I see your point, and I also will support this.
Oh, okay.
Madam Mayor, if I could real quick, if I had Nancy come up and talk a little bit about the history, the communication that went into this. I also agree with Councilwoman Ashford and Ruiz about the impact Jim Atchison's made. There's so many things that go on in this community through public and private events that Mr. Atchison financially supports, and then as the financial contribution comes in, he says, "Don't use my name. I just wanna be a confidential supporter." And I think that's such a testament to the kinda guy is that people really have no idea how much he's done to support our Parks and Recreation Program, whether that's comping days at Court Street Pool or funding programs. So, I wanted Nancy to talk a little bit about just what kinda impact he's had.
Yeah, Mayor Rep and council, and I agree with you guys wholeheartedly. You could do a million things for him because of all the wonderful things he's done for our city, and you guys probably don't even know the half of the things that he's done for the Parks and Recreation Department in all the years I've been there. He did live in the neighborhood, but it was much more than that. He has funded programs there. I've been with the city for twenty-two years. He's funded programs there for probably the last twenty that nobody probably even know about, like we do Lincoln Park Fund Days where the kids get lunch, and they do fun-free activities, and Mr. Atchison would come out to the park while we were doing these activities with the kids. He's been out... And when we needed new playgrounds, equipment this year, you know, two minutes, and he was like, "Let's get some new playground equipment. Let's upgrade the park." And it's just been a great community testament, too, of everybody that's come out to help that park, but he was right there with the dollars, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, like I'd put a statue in front of Palmer if I could, but... Because, I mean, I'm telling you, anytime I ever have asked him to do anything, he's there for us. Over... People don't probably realize this, but over a thousand, probably more than that, middle schoolers, every year for the Parks and Recreation Department, if you volunteer a certain amount of hours, he sends them to Cedar Point, and I've had kids that have said, "Miss Nancy, are we gonna be able to see the Blue Water Bridge from Cedar Point?" And they've never left Port Huron, and this... And these kids get the... I get goosebumps because I just think it's so cool. They get the gratitude of helping all summer long, and then at the end of the summer, Mr. Atchison pays them for breakfast, lunch, dinner, milkshakes, gift card at Cedar Point. And so, I know it doesn't seem like a big testament to him, but to me, he really does love the kids of this community, and people probably don't see that. They see the big buildings, or they see maybe the big ribbon cuttings, but it's so much more like the kids wrote him personal letters, and he absolutely... He reads every single one. He's like, "Somebody call me dude." I'm like, "You're a cool dude." And he loves it. So, that's why we wanted to do this, you know, and maybe in the future, there's other things, but from the Parks and Recreation standpoint, he's just done so much, and he loves Lincoln Park, and we just wanted that playground area that he's donated again to this year. We wanted to do a testament to him, because there's just... I could go on and on and on of all the things that he's helped... Our movie screen, he bought that so we could do free movies in the park. And so, just tons of different little things, and like James said, he'll discount kids to go to Court Street Pool so that kids, you know, because kids will be collecting cans or whatever to go to the pool. He's like, "I wanna make sure that they can all get in." So, there's so many things in Parks and Recreation. Cleveland School, he did a whole bunch of like of our, you know, motivational speakers that we've done the last year, and some of the... He came to watch the violinist play there, and he loved it, and it's just so that's why I want him to have a little piece of, I don't know, the Parks and Rec... And that, to me, is nothing better than a park, so for our end of it.
One of the things as well Nancy and I were looking at is in Audrey Pack Park, you know, we began studying the history of that park and talking with family members and community members, and, you know, you look back at her professional records, being a councilwoman, being a county commissioner, and there's this, you know, I look back at the meeting minutes, and it's... You have this very public figure, but then there was the quiet strength where she would walk across the street and volunteer maintaining this park, making sure it was picked up. And, you know, with the Audrey Pack Park, I think it shows that, you know, we all can be on TV, we all can be in these meetings, get quoted in the paper, but it's the quiet strength, the quiet leaders who go in when no one's watching and clean a park and maintain a park and plant flowers. And her family told us how important that park was to her, and I called around to some of the people, her and her husband. Her husband served in the Port Huron Housing Commission. I talked to Jim Dewey about what an influential family they were in that neighborhood. That neighborhood was very special, the people in that neighborhood very special, and so I thought it was very honoring to take them both tonight, two very different people from very different walks of life who had such a unique and special impact on that neighborhood, and so that's why I was glad Nancy and I were able to put this for you guys and on a package deal type thing.
Thank you. Thank you. No, I agree. I think it's something that surely it's not a big thing, but it's a... Something that would probably be very special to him, and it doesn't deter us from doing something else in the future. If there's no other discussion, we will take the vote on items three and four.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item five, please.
Approving the allocation of five thousand dollars to support the two thousand seventeen Silver Sticks Tournament using Michigan Department of Transportation mitigation funding dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ruiz, is there discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Amos.
How are we determining what dollar amounts we're divvying out to certain organizations for... Through that Michigan Department of Transportation mitigation funding, how are we determining who gets ten thousand or five thousand?
Absolutely. Madam Mayor and council, before you the resolution tonight was Mayor Rep asked me to draft this resolution and bring it forth to you guys. This is follow similar practices on the economic... More the economic development component, the size and scope of events. If you look at the amount of people Silver Sticks brings in, it is a big economic draw in our downtown. The Silver Sticks organization has... And their volunteers have went to extraordinary measures to make it work on a three-weekend tournament, and their efforts to keep that tournament here are absolutely huge. And one of the things we committed to them at the beginning was we wanna work with them, make sure that if they keep it here, we find a way to support them. And in the past, we have supported similar projects. I believe Silver Sticks in the past has been funded once before on mitigation dollars. They bring in about five to six thousand people for their tournament, and so if you compare it to like Blue Water Festival, that brings in about thirty thousand people. It's proportionately that way, so it's kind of not a... If you're asking if there's equation or matrix we use, there's really not. I will say that we are working behind the scenes with our large corporate sponsors and other partners like the Visitors Bureau to... This is just the first step. I want Silver Sticks to know that there are behind-the-scenes efforts going on to bring more donors to the table to ensure that we have, you know, we have the best financial package we could put together to keep that tournament here. So, as to your question, is there a matrix or some way we determine that? We kinda do it based on proportionate size of events, but there's not really a hard science to it, to be quite honest with you.
Understandable. And normally, I would vote no on something like this because I just don't believe in picking and choosing which organizations we give to. Hopefully, in the future, we can come up with a request form or something so those organizations who are seeking dollars or putting on events in the community can request for us to be able to allocate money to them so it's fair and inclusive. But looking at what Silver Sticks offer as well as the youth enrichment portion, I would definitely be voting yes on that tonight.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, Mayor Rep.
Councilmember Harris.
You know, I have looked at this the last couple of weeks, and I know whatever I do or whatever I voted, I mean, it's just kinda tough decision. You know, I've looked at this, and I've even brought up the fact before, the Michigan law requires that we cannot allocate funds, municipal funds, to nonprofit organizations. So, I've kinda sit back in the thing and looking at it, and I've tossed a bunch of things out, and I wish we could've had the message to bring in Silver Stick and talk about it. Some of the things that I had looked at was with a proposal that we would waive the elimination fees for the elimination rounds and the final rounds, you know? I really think that that... A package like that where once the teams got to where they have elimination basis, that the city of Port Huron or through the McMoRan Authority, after we've just reconciled all the revenues and losses and stuff with McMoRan, and we got a clean slate, if we could come up with a formula like that, that I think that Silver Stick would actually reap more benefits if we covered their cost of their elimination ice time, your semifinals, and your finals. I just... Those are just things that have come out of my mind. I mean, it... Because if you look at the law, and I know I've talked to Todd Shoddy before and stuff, and I've got a packet of information here, three different lawyers and stuff, and they basically say the law's the law, but I'm all for Silver Stick getting the money. It's gotta go. It's gonna be three weekends this year. My recommendation is that, if we could, to use our McMoRan Authority or the McMoRan Budget to finance Silver Stick from the elimination rounds to the end with... And waive the ice fees.
Madam Mayor.
Now, I don't know if Silver Stick has talked about that or not, or they're willing to talk about it. I just think it's a great idea, and I think it's just a plus for Silver Stick in Port Huron.
Councilman Harris, I couldn't agree with you more. In fact, Mark Neal, the chairman of the McMoRan Authority... Well, first and foremost, the question is legality of the dollars. I'll leave that for the city attorney to address. But as for the McMoRan Authority, I said this is the first step. I will tell you that I spoke with Mark Neal and that the McMoRan Authority will be discussing either their next meeting or a meeting very shortly after that about a special discounted ice rate for Silver Sticks. They spent about thirteen thousand dollars in ice rental last year for the tournament, and so we believe that there's room that we can work, so not even just financial contributions, but the McMoRan Authority has the ability to work in in-kind services, and so I don't wanna go into detail, as that's a separate authority issue, but I will tell you that the McMoRan Authority will be taking up the... Of a special ice discount rate for Silver Sticks.
Now, see, that would've been nice if that was all on the plate tonight. I'm surprised about that coming here, and that kinda bothers me that you get surprised by these things, because I mean, not that I just thought it was my idea, but it's the idea that, you know, we wanna make this thing go, and we have a chance to make it go. We've got three weekends now. Now, we've got to get the people to...
It didn't come here tonight because we don't have the authority given with the governing board of McMoRan Authority. That's an issue that they have to take up, so we don't have the ability at this council level to address a authority issue.
Todd, if you wanna address the other issue, please.
Yes, on the legality of a five thousand dollar contribution as part of our mitigation funds, I've addressed this issue twice, I think, in the last year, and I'm very comfortable that it's legal, especially given that it's mitigation funds, so it's money that was provided by the state pursuant to an agreement that we would spend it in a certain way, and providing funds to an organization that's bringing in tourism dollars into the city falls squarely within that agreement, and that really, it's a requirement that we spend it in this type of fashion. So, it's clearly legal.
Thank you.
Mayor Rep?
Councilmember Lewandowski.
I'm gonna fully support giving Silver Sticks a five thousand dollars, too, and I remember in times past that they had to fight to even get a sign downtown. It's something that I think that we need to do for them. You know, the way I look at it is when you get kicked in the teeth, you know, we gotta throw them a five thousand dollar band-aid after what council did to them to keep this in town, so I fully support it.
Mayor Rep? Yeah. Another two representatives... Oh, sorry. I know, I was just gonna let Todd sit down. I think we're done with his opinion, so I just have to stand up there.
We have both of the Silver Stick representatives in the room, and we did make a promise that we would do anything we could to make sure Silver Stick stayed. I personally thank you as well that we're going to the three weekends. I think it's going to be wonderful, and for all your hard work to keep it here. Beyond the five thousand, though, I just wanna throw out that as you're planning and Beyond the 5,000, though, I just want to throw out that as you're planning and moving forward, please keep us involved and the city involved. If there's anything beyond the donation side that we're already working on, anything else that we can do, signs downtown. Other things that we can do that we might not have thought of to help this really be a home run, please let us know. And we'll do whatever we can within our power to make this the best ever and keep it around.
Any other discussion? We'll take the vote.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item six, please.
Approving the amendment to the agreement with Rowe Professional Service Company for professional engineering services for the pump station and metering equipment upgrades.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, supported by Councilmember Ashford. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Mayor Rep, with this amendment, is there any costs associated with this agreement?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilmember Ashford. We are entering the third year of a three-year agreement with Rowe to provide engineering technical support for design and construction, refurbishment of lift stations. In this particular case, the third year, scope of work was not well-defined. It was simply listed as a northern lift station. We've now decided that it's going to be the Stone Street Lift Station. We have a number. It's in the budget. It's in the capital improvement plan. So there is money associated with this, about $71,000, and it's already been budgeted.
Okay. Well, that's what I wanted to know, $71,000.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Rep.
You are welcome. Any other questions or discussion? We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. It was suggested to that we take seven, eight, and nine because they all have to do with inspections of the 7th and/or 10th Street, Crashett Avenue bridges. Is there any objections to doing that?
No.
We will take seven, eight, and nine together.
Approving the proposal with DLZ Michigan Incorporated for engineering services to complete the load rating calculations for the 7th Street Bridge. Approving the proposal with DLZ Michigan Incorporated for engineering services to complete the 2016 bridge safety inspections of 7th Street, 10th Street, and Grashett Avenue bridges. And approving the proposal with Ayers Associates for underwater bridge footing inspection services for the 7th Street and 10th Street Bridges.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Amos, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Ashford, is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Mayor Rep, could we have Lenny?
You should just kept standing there.
Yeah. Can you elaborate on the three of them together? First of all, the question is, are these, this is all mandatory?
Ah, very good question. Glad you asked that. The three proposals that you've got here are for bridge inspection services. The first one with Ayers is of course a mandate from the state every five years that we have to do this. In this particular case, we have a requirement to do an underwater bridge inspection, which is a new requirement. And there are very few firms out there that are qualified both to do a bridge inspection and to do an underwater bridge inspection. So you have to have SCUBA-certified bridge technicians. Ayers is qualified. In fact, they have just completed the Military Street Bridge inspection for MDOT. And they are very well-qualified. Yes, this is a requirement by the state in which they are not providing any funding. So.
What kind of mandate is that?
Pardon?
What kind of mandate is that?
That's an unfunded mandate.
Unfunded mandate. Unfunded. The famous word.
DLZ, there are two proposals here. One of them is to complete the load rating calculations for the 7th Street Bridge. Now, this calculation was done with the 7th and 10th Street Bridge four years ago. However, they used the wrong method for calculating the load rating for the 7th Street Bridge. And so they've got a new method that's required to give it a load rating. And I could really bore you with all the details.
I don't want all that.
But this is a one-time inspection that, once it's done, we don't have to do this again. But again, this is a mandate from the state, which is, they're not providing any funding, which would be an unfunded mandate. The last inspection is a biennial requirement for all of the bridges that are under our maintenance, which would include 7th, 10th, and the Grashett Avenue Bridge on Grashett at the canal. Biennial, every two years. It's a routine inspection for all the bridges under the city's maintenance that we have to do to make sure that they can meet and that the deterioration of the structures haven't degraded their performance so that they can carry the loads in which they're designed. Yes, it's also an unfunded mandate.
All right. So you got a straight pass. Just one rider. While listening to you, you said that there was an error in calculations. We did something. We paid to have it done the way they want it done.
It wasn't an error, ma'am. It was, they used the wrong methodology.
Okay, they used the wrong methodology that caused this money?
Yes, ma'am. It was.
Did they compensate us?
What happens is they, no, ma'am. They changed the inspection methodology for this type of bridge. And therefore, to provide us load rating factor, we have to provide an inspection with, using the new method that was not done four years ago. And therefore, we have to do this.
Oh, okay. And the timeframe on this is what?
We have to have this completed essentially by the end of the year.
By the end of the year, okay.
Lenny, real quick, I think what you're asking is, they didn't, the methodology they used last time wasn't wrong at the time and the state just changed the standards. Okay, so it's not like they did it wrong last time.
No, they changed the method.
It was his word. Would you quit trying to talk for him and read my mind? Now, he can read mine. It's okay. But it's all good. Thanks, Mayor Rep.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Lenny.
Thank you. We will take the vote for seven, eight, and nine.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item 10, please.
Approving the application from Midtown Lofts LLC for a Neighborhood Enterprise Zone rehabilitation certificate for 411 Grand River Avenue.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Council.
Go right ahead.
No, you go ahead. Go ahead. Always talk. Go ahead, go ahead.
Councilmember Amos?
I just wanted to make a statement. I'm just really excited as we look at the development of downtown and all the new lofts that are going up. Definitely great to see, you know, as a young professional and having opportunities to engage. And I was hoping I can move in one, but I don't think my girls are going to let me, so. Just wanted to make that statement that we're moving in the right direction downtown.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ashford?
Yes. Okay, I want to know, how many zones do we have currently?
That'd be a good question for David.
Yes.
As David is coming up here, if I could just quickly point out, Michelle and Steve are in the audience tonight. Just a quick thank you for picking another building in downtown. It seems you guys continuously are single-handedly restoring downtown with all the different projects between the Citadel going on and this is now another project. So just appreciate your continued investment in our community. And David can answer that question.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Council. Very good question. We were actually discussing that today in the planning department. The NEZ extends along the length of Huron and down Military. It was divided up into sections. The exact number, that I would have to look into. But the corridor itself extends roughly about one block to the east and west. And this property is at kind of the extreme eastern portion of the zone. But again, it was designed to encourage just that. Loft development up on the second floors and third floors of the downtown buildings that are basically languished for 50-some years. So this is another example of the WITS and their investment in the community.
Okay. And David, you know, just for our audience, this is a neighborhood enterprise zone. Can you roughly give the benefits of this? I know it promotes, you know.
Sure. The neighborhood enterprise zone is meant strictly for residential investment projects. It is meant to hold the current taxable value at its current level with the additional investments that they're going to make, which will be above $400,000 on this particular project with two office area, retail areas on the first floor, three additional lofts, two being two-bedroom, one being a single-bedroom. But this will then, additional value is what you provide the tax payment on. So you don't lose anything that you already, you know, you already have. It just allows them a benefit for whatever additional investments they place in the community.
Right. And also with that, now, have we done such anything out in the neighborhoods at all? In terms of neighborhood, in terms of this?
Of a neighborhood Nez?
Yes.
We don't have any established districts in the neighborhoods. Right now, it's strictly in the downtown area.
Right.
There is opportunity for Nez as well for neighborhoods. And that could be possibly something we could look at if there are certain areas we'd like to target for new investment, just as we have done for the downtown.
Yeah. Because I know most communities across the United States have went into the neighborhoods. They did it the opposite way than we're doing it. But we were just in such dire straits downtown that it does promote a new investment down there.
Absolutely.
So I join Councilmember Amos in saying it's a great day downtown. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Rep.
Yes. Thank you, David. Any other discussion? I know it's a little off of this subject, but the WITS are in the audience. When is the, are your lofts opening on the Citadel? Sorry, I put you on the spot, didn't I?
There's been a couple of old texts.
Yeah, would you please just be interested while we're talking about it, if you don't mind?
Ask them how much they are.
Council, Steve Witt, thanks for the question and thanks for the compliments. It means a lot. I think I spend so much time downtown, I should just put a mailbox up somewhere. The lofts, probably within one month tops. There's been, we, the Gothic windows out front have really been the thorn in the side. We had a contract to have them made back in February. They were supposed to deliver them in March. And as you can imagine, we're well past March. But the Gothic windows, literally, to duplicate the historic content, they have, I think there was somebody whittling it on a front porch somewhere. They're supposed to be here on the 14th. This 14th. And that's really what's holding up the lofts from opening. They're done. But I think people would want windows in their lofts.
I think so. Probably a good idea, but it's a great project. I know I went through before it was complete and it looks great, so I'm looking forward to seeing it once they're done.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will vote on item 10.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes.
Item 11.
Approve above all others the application of Sperry's Theater Operations LLC doing business as Sperry's Movie House, 301 Huron Avenue for a Class C license pursuant to Public Act 501 of 2006, Section 436.1521A, Subsection 1B.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald, is there a second?
Support.
Councilmember Amos, is there a discussion?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Lewandowski.
Can you give clarification above what, above all others in terms?
Yeah, I know that's kind of a strange term, isn't it?
Anyone, yeah. Guess it will be the best beer in town.
Don't think it means that.
As many of you know, the past couple of months, the chief and I have been attending several Liquor Control Commission hearings. And this is actually one of the, one of the available licenses that a city can pursue within their city, even though they're at their allotment based upon their population. So this is one, above all others, means that they can get this despite the fact that the city still has, I think we're still negative one right now as we stand, where we're one over our allotment. So it's a special one that's provided in a development area. And I believe the Liquor Control Commission has expressed to the chief and I that they would be supportive of the city given the loss of a license downtown recently.
Thank you. Just, any more questions for Todd, from anybody? Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? I guess we can put Scott Beeden on the hot seat too, if you don't mind. When are you going to be complete with this one? It's exciting also.
Thank you, Mayor, for the question and Council for taking action tonight for the liquor license. The Sperry's project, as everyone knows, is well underway. And we are dry-welling the third floor. It's just about done. They're dry-welling the first floor as we speak. And we are still shooting for that fall opening. I think the, I'm not exactly sure the definition of fall, if that is December 20th or whatever it is. But we will be, we will be done before the Thanksgiving blockbusters hit the theaters. So the good news is we'll be able to hang our shingle and our hat out before Thanksgiving. But I'm not sure if that's October or if that's November yet. As Steve has expressed, he has windows issues. We kind of do too. So we're working with the state elevator folks and our window folks to make sure that we get that target done. But we are still on track for a fall opening on Sperry's. And these opportunities to have a restaurant on the second floor and offer alcohol at the concession stands makes it just another unique venture downtown for folks to socialize in. So we're happy to be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys use the same window distributor?
He's installing them.
Madam Mayor, if I could real quick, with the Sperry's development and with Citadel, part of their incentive package was to go back to historical standards. And the Sperry's project has gone to extraordinary measures to make sure the windows and the interior are back to historical standards. I personally know that Scott has been trekking out in fields looking for old pieces of the building to ensure that, you know, if he hears a rumor that there's an old piece of Sperry's in a field, he will go out there and find it. He is, I know, I talked to Sue's at the museum. He's been trolling the museum. And so they've gone to extraordinary lengths to ensure that that piece of history and that landmark. And I applaud you in both those efforts for making sure we don't forget our past in those projects.
Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yes.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. Item 12.
Authorizing expenditures for the water and wastewater capital improvement projects to be reimbursed with proceeds from the future sale of bonds.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Councilmember Ashford, is there a second?
Support.
Mayor Pro Tem Archibald. Just before I open up for discussion, I wonder if we could have a little bit of an explanation of this?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. What's before you is a resolution that would allow us to start accumulating expenditures so that the next time we borrow, we'll be able to pay ourselves back. That is the first step in the borrowing process, as you will recall from past borrowings. The amount in the resolution is a maximum amount. You might say it's a worst-case scenario. We would hope that the actual number would be a much lower amount. But we haven't yet been able to do the work and the type of analysis we need to do to pare that number down. Before any bond issue would come before you, we would take a much harder look and try to strike any projects or reduce the cost if possible in order to get those to a lower amount. The way this works is, is once we borrow, it will sort of be a four-year window because we can pay ourselves back for a year and then we can use the proceeds for three prospective years. So this resolution really begins the accumulation of the cost. So that's the first step. Some of the, in addition, some of our prior bond issues are being looked at to see if we can refinance them. And so eventually, when we borrow, it could either be as a standalone borrowing or it could be combined with a refinancing, which might allow us to save some of our fixed costs like attorney fees and underwriting. So this could go either way. So this is the first step in that process.
Thank you. Anybody, any questions for Mr. Brown?
Yeah. Oh, go ahead.
I'm just curious, how much do we have in outstanding debt for the water and wastewater for bonds?
It is in the neighborhood of $93 million at this point.
No mention, sorry?
Actually, the next four years, our payments are going to be between 11.7 million and 12 million. After that, they start to drop off fairly quickly. If you recall, we had a graph that shows this, what my hope would be, would be the next borrowing will get us to that point where the debt starts dropping off. For instance, the first year after that, it goes from 12 million to 10.3 and then 9.5 and 8.5. So as you can see, what we're hoping to be able to do is use some of that cash to actually pay for our construction needs rather than having to borrow for them. So actually, I was hoping we wouldn't have to borrow again, but it's pretty clear we're going to have to. So this is the first step in that process.
Do we have any idea how this will affect water rates for next year?
Not really, no. Not at this point, I don't.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yeah, you mentioned about, there's some things that you're going to have to consider before you can get to a true-up number.
Right.
Okay. What are some of the driving factors that you're contemplating?
Well, my limited knowledge of that, I could say things like, once they open the hole in the ground, they don't know what condition the,
Yeah, the unknown.
the piping is going to be in. It may need to be replaced. It may be fine. You know, our engineers sort of used an estimate and probably Lenny could speak to that better than me. But I'm assuming he used an estimate that, you know, not knowing what would need to be replaced, it's, I asked him for a, kind of a worst-case number because what we didn't want to happen was to be able to borrow and then to run out of the money. the money before we ran out of the project. So, he gave me what I asked him for.
Okay, but, so, so you don't have any hypothesis or, you don't have any, you know, any vision or ballparks of what the factors are, not just the cost? I'm not just the cost.
Well, it would be sitting down with our engineers. I don't know if you want to speak to that money, but it would be sitting down with our engineers and going over, I mean, as you know from the list, it goes four years out, and I don't know that all of those projects have even been, you know, what stage they're at on the board at this point.
Oh, okay.
The, the projects that Mr. Brennan is reviewing for funding are the projects that we've got essentially in our capital improvement program for the next five to six years, and they include replacement of water lines and sewer lines that we know, in many cases, are upwards of a hundred years old. We still have sewer that we know needs to be replaced in the city, and when it's a water and wastewater program, that's what we were looking at putting on his list, things of that nature, as well as other improvements that we know we need at the wastewater plant and at the water plant. So, the driving force is just regular maintenance that we have planned or need to do moving forward for the infrastructure in the city. We don't have any emergency that's occurring. This is simply standard, year-in, year-out maintenance of our infrastructure.
So, there's no priority given to that of any nature?
Well, we prioritize our work based on what we anticipate the need is. If we know that there's a water main that we have twelve breaks a year, we know, and it's a hundred years old, that's probably a priority, as opposed to one that's only eighty years old and we get three breaks a year. We have that data that we use to say, we need to fix this before we fix that. And most of these projects are in the right-of-way, so we have a component that is also the road, but we only are talking about that road pavement project that's associated with a water or wastewater repair or replacement.
But you can manage that, correct?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's the same thing that we, the city has been doing for, for decades so far.
Right, so, case in point, you can manage it, but what my question was, that, you know, what was the driving factors that's, that's gonna get you to where you need to be in terms of the bond? And you said he could answer it, and, and like you said, I'm just gonna take the theory, like if I'm an engineer and I'm going underneath the ground, I might find this, I might find that, but before I go under there, I gotta have some idea of what I'm digging into.
Right.
Might be a landmine. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussions?
Mayor Rep?
Yes, Councilmember Harris?
Just, just off the, not off the topic, but, you know, we, we just barely approved a budget that has an increase in about five point five percent, and with just some of the observations, I guess the question was from Allen about our water and sewer rates and stuff, and I hope we aren't just giving him a present this year and an election year and sock it to him next year. I mean, it's, it's, it's a crazy thing to say, but it just throws that in the back of my mind right now, and, and I just hope that that's not the effect of this, what we have to do to keep the city running, so...
Well, if I, if I could take maybe the opposite tact, is if we had to cash out all of these improvements rather than bonding for them and paying for them over twenty years, which their, which their life is probably extensively longer than that, we would, in fact, have to increase rates in order to get the cash to, to pay on a cash basis, so I might take the opposite.
The situation is a dang if you do and dang if you don't, correct?
Well, yeah, we have to maintain our, our water and sewer lines, so...
Madam Mayor, if I could, in addition to Ken's comments about that, it's appropriate that when we, whenever we're doing a project and we capitalize out the useful lifespan is thirty to forty years, it's appropriate to spend, to spread out those financing over that period of time, and so all the users can help fund that rather than just the person who is using that utility today. Rather than sticking on the home over today, it's spread over thirty years, and that's how most of enterprise management works, so that's correct on that.
Thank you. Thank you. We will take the vote.
Councilmember Amos?
Yes.
Councilmember Archibald?
Yes.
Councilmember Ashford?
Yes.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lewandowski?
No.
Councilmember Ruiz?
Yes.
Mayor Rep?
Yes. That concludes our agenda for this evening. A couple of announcements. Deadline for nominations to be submitted to the city clerk's office for the Beautification Commission's Annual Yard of the Year Contest is July the fifteenth, which is Friday. The next regular city council meeting will be held on August the eighth, and in addition to that, I guess I, just a reminder, I don't think it needs to be a reminder, that we have lots of activity going on in our community this weekend with the Water Fest, so there's lots to do for everyone to partake in, so I decided to bring that up. If there's anything else from Council before we adjourn, yes, Councilmember Harris?
I'd just like to, to kind of make a comment. You know, the people have come up here about Palmer Park tonight, and I think that their comments are well-taken here, but I guess I'm more impressed by the photos and stuff that they brought up to us here, and, and I don't think we can take that situation likely. Some of the damage has been done to the basketball courts already, and just some of the general policing of the area, and I know we, we try our darndest, but you can't follow everybody around, but we have a situation up there that's, I wouldn't want my neighborhood, so we, I'd hope we can get together and do something. It's not good.
Anything else from Council?
Back off what Councilmember Harris said, is, you know, I know that these are serious problems. I can, you know, feel for your pain in living over there, having to deal with that. You know, it's one of those things I wish as a Council we would have known about a year ago, before, you know, even six months ago. It's twice in probably the last three or four meetings now that there's been an issue going on, that it's been over a year happening in the city that we're not being advised on, and I think it's ironic on the night that we turn in the council or the city manager's evaluation, here we go again with another, you know, between the water leak or the oil leaking or whatever it might be into the canal to, to this, you know, issue, so I think that's part of the reason why, you'll see why I marked them down, is, is communications lacking with all Council.
Any other comments? I guess I would add to that, that I think that, you know, I've had communication with the neighbors, well, not all of them, but with one in particular over the last, and a lot of the solutions, they were trying to work, and then I didn't hear anything for a long time, so I think that for a long, it was assumed that everything was better, so I apologize for that. I certainly hope that we can do something to remedy the situation.